Council Needles Public Utility Authority, Austin Authority City of Needles will come to order. Call the board, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell.
President.
LaCorte. Eric Merritt.
Here.
Turnigan.
Here.
Poe. Longbridge.
Here.
Thank you.
Public comments pertaining to the executive session items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Recession to executive session. Executive session, if you want to be.
Yes, the items for closed session are item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation that involves one potential case. And item B is conference with real property negotiators. The property involves the 19th hole bar and grill located at 144 Grand Drive. Item C is conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation, and that involves one potential case. Item D is conference with real property negotiators, and this involves the Tri-State Alano Club located at 801 North, I'm sorry, 801 Thursday. And then item E is conference with labor negotiator pursuant to California Government Code 5495-7.6. Personnel, agency representative, city manager Patrick Martinez, or its designated employee organization is the Teachers Local Mentoring Center.
Council Needles Public Utility Authority, Austin Authority City of Needles will come to order. Executive session report by city attorney.
Yes, the council met executive session. Item A was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. And that involved one case. There was no reportable action taken under item A. Item B, conference with real property negotiators. The property 19th hole bar and grill, address is listed in agenda. There was no reportable action taken on that item in closed session. Item C was conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation involving one case. There was no reportable action taken on that item. Item D, conference with real property negotiators, and that involved the Tri-State Alano Club property at 801 Third Street in Needles, and there was no reportable action taken on that item. Item E was conference with labor negotiator pursuant to California Government Code Section 5495-7.6. Personnel, the agency representative, the city manager Patrick Martinez, or its designated employee organization Teachers Local Mentoring 1932. There was reportable action taken on that item. There was a motion to approve a side letter of agreement, the memorandum of understanding between the City of Needles, Teachers Local Mentoring 1932, Union for the Unclassified, Enchantment, and Complimental Employees Unit 2019-2023. And that side lettered, well, there was a motion to approve the side letter. The motion was made by Councilmember LaCorte, the second by Councilmember Campbell, and the vote was Campbell in favor of approving the side letter. The court went in favor. Councilmember Merritt in favor, Councilmember Poe in favor, Councilmember Delo in favor, and Councilmember Longbridge. So, you get a side letter. That puts a report out.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Campbell here.
LaCorte.
Here.
Barrett.
Here.
Turnigan.
Here.
Poe.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
Longbridge.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Lord, for all the civil servants. Thank you for the hard living sacrifices. May tend to bless them. We generously give to each of their lives. We discernly parts, we skillfully govern the people of our city. With the mayor's city leaders, staffs, city council, wisdom, so they may solve the problems, establish between right and wrong, bring order stability and prosperity to our people. We have this city with us tonight, prior counselors, Tamara and Zach Longacre. And we'd like to welcome Darren Alfonso from Voluntät City, City Council. We'd also like to welcome Bill Vellarino, Chief Fire Department. City Attorney, Parliamentary Procedures.
Okay, according to the rules and procedure adopted by the councils, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance, order, and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject, which is why every other member choosing to speak shall have spoken. Members of the public attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. And just as a reminder, the council has adopted a three-minute time limit for public comment. Thank you.
As a courtesy to those who attend this, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Public affairs, persons wishing to address the NQA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by Municipal Code Section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code Section 54950 permit the City Council from taking action on specific items to live appears on the agenda.
Today I was cited for smelling, okay? My problem with this is you guys don't seem to be working with us in any way, okay? I had a gentleman today trying to go up to my facility, drive back and forth across the front, and obviously didn't catch the smell, or he could have done what he did. What he does then is drives around to back to my facility where my ventilation is 10 feet away from 30,000 plants that produce crap looks monthly to the city every month in taxes, and deliberately tries to catch a wind. If you stand in front of any of these facilities for 20 minutes at a time and somebody opens a door, you're going to catch a wind, okay? I don't like the smell of Carl's Jr., but I don't need a fine lane for the smell. So it's like, I understand if the smell rolls out the front, and I got to find like everyone else, but that's not how it's doing. You guys are looking for a reason to cite me. I got cited today by code enforcement who was off work, called in off duty, off work, to cite me on his own time, okay, because it was so overwhelming, which was not, or else they wouldn't have had to drive all the way to the back. There is absolutely no housing by my facility, none, to be in the back that's below the train tracks. Who is he trying to prevent the smell from going to? Secondly, then I hear that a skizzy for some reason is still exempt. Why is that? Okay, it's been over a year or so that you guys told him to fix their problems. Can't go by there with the kind of air they got and not have to smell every single day, but they're not getting fined every single day like you guys are talking about, even us. Okay, this is wrong. If you're going to find us, fine, find everybody, but they're not even going by that facility because you guys gave them full exemption, which is insane. And so here's my question. The reason they supposedly have their exemption is they're waiting on air conditioning. If I go buy a half a million in AC from their company, can I wait exempt for the next five years until the ACs come like you're allowing them to do? You haven't given them any deadlines. You haven't done anything, but you're citing us that are both being, I spent thousands a month to fix the problems you guys complain about. I put $10,000 in ventilation systems in just to have you guys send air quality out and fine me 10 grand for blowing air outside of the building, okay? It is insane. Every time we try to fix, I spend $3,000 a month on air freshener love trying to fix the facility. Some of you guys are very helpful and work with us, but it's just, it's really bad when you got to go out and wait a month to reason to find us, okay? And I'm not saying my facility don't have its days, but I'm just, I don't have any housing by me or anything. So if you drove by and caught a small wind for the contribution that we've made to the city, it's insane that you guys, that somebody can't give us a little bit of slack on that. And some of you do, I'm not saying you don't. It's just people are going out of their way to deliberately give us permits. And that's pretty much all of our industry.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to have a chance, since I'm not in the chamber anymore, and say something that's not about the chamber. I'm really excited to say that this year I'm going to be running for mayor. And I know that there is, the forums coming up, and there's actually going to be two of them. One is going to be sponsored by Needles Tourism. And we, since you are a part of what's going to be being done, I would hope that you'll be stepping away from the organization of that event. Just to prevent any impropriety or thoughts of impropriety by anybody else, so just to, and then our second one is actually going to be held at the Power Verde Council. They said that they would be interested in sponsoring a second meeting of candidates where people will be able to come in directly and ask their question directly to anybody that they feel that their question is for. So I'm just really excited to say that. I'm looking forward to the season, and I look forward to the roll call. Thank you.
Any other public affairs? The public affairs will be closed. Public hearing, public hearing notes to consider all evidence and testimony. For against approval and ordinance 666-AC. Amending Article 13-IV Operation of Vehicles, Section 13-29. Decrease of the prime of prima base speed limits of the Needles Municipal Code to include the prima base speed limit for clary drive between San Clemente Street and Lily Hill Drive and authorized public works to implement the signing and striking plan. City managers.
Yes, Kathy Roush, our Capitol Projects Manager, interim development director, providing to present a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The party tonight is ordinance number 666-AC. Adopt ordinance of the City Council of the City of Needles, amending Article 4, Operation of Vehicle, Section 1329 to include the prima base speed limit recommended for clary drive between San Clemente Street and Lily Hill Drive. Hold on, I'm actually on the third side. A little background on this, TKD Engineering Inc. was requested to complete an engineering and traffic survey for clary drive to provide a speed zone recommendation and signing and striking plan for City Council consideration and approval. The engineering and traffic survey was to be conducted in accordance with provisions in law set forth in the California Vehicle Code with guidance from the California Manual on Traffic Control Devices, the MUCCD 2014, Revision 8. The engineering and traffic survey includes recommendations for posted radar enforceable speed limit on clary drive, with supporting documentation that satisfies the requirements of the California Section 402 of the California University Act.
Yeah, this is a sewer easement.
But next, I have a slide in the area.
Let's take a two-minute recess, so you can give me a just for the way. This is some industry. Thanks. Let's save it on teams, and then they can steal it from that project.
Clearing.
Yes, sir.
Rip one slide if you want to.
Therefore, is adopt ordinance of the City Council of the City of Needles, amend the Article 4, Operation of Vehicles, Section 1329. The prima base speed limit recommended for clary drive between San Clemente Street and Lily Hill Drive. A little background on this project, TKD Engineering Inc. was requested to complete an engineering and traffic survey for clary drive to provide a speed zone recommendation and signing and striking plan for City Council consideration and approvals. Engineering and traffic survey was to be conducted in accordance with provisions in law set forth in the California Vehicle Code with guidance from the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, 2014, Revision 8. The engineering and traffic survey includes recommendations for posted radar enforceable speed limit on clary drive with supporting documentation that satisfies the requirements of the California Vehicle Code. Signing and striking plans were also requested for clary drive and San Clemente Street. This slide is a location map of the segment of the speed zone that was evaluated as clary drive between Lily Hill Drive and San Clemente Street. Previously, San Clemente Street, that speed survey was done with the 2022 report. So, the traffic survey elements, what this survey actually consists of is a spot survey and measurement of the prevailing speed on that roadway. Fundamentally, establishing speed limits recognize that the majority of drivers behave in a safe and reasonable manner. Therefore, these driving characteristics should be considered legal. So first, basically, they go out and measure the speed on that street. They do a actual traffic count and radar count and come up with the 85th percentile speed. And in this case, on clary drive was 36 miles per hour. They also looked at the collision history the last three years, and there was one reportable accident. Another factor used in engineering and traffic survey is to establish speed limits, identifying conditions which may not be readily apparent to the driver. So they also look at the roadway condition, traffic characteristics, the land use, residential density, and safety of ice and footpath and pedestrian. Slide. So here is some site photos. The first one, looking south on clary drive, you'll see the current, you know, there are the tape sites. The bottom photo is on San Clemente Street, looking west before the curve to clary drive. So in this case, they looked at the 85th percentile speed. It was measured. And they took into consideration the conditions of the roadway. The traffic engineer that did this evaluation reduces speed by five miles an hour and recommends a 30 mile an hour speed limit. This is just a photo of the striking plan there on the curvature. They're recommending a 10 mile per hour speed limit around the curve. There's Chevron signs, there's the arrow signs, there's pre-warning signs. And also, they will include down on San Clemente Street, a speed enforced by radar sign. So with that, the recommended action is adopt ordinance 666-AC, amend the Article 4, Operation of Vehicles, Section 1329. Decrease of prima base speed limits of the Needles Municipal Code and put the prima base speed limit for clary drive between San Clemente Street and Lily Hill Drive, and authorize public works to implement the signing of strike. That's the spirit. Go ahead, any questions.
Do I look too close to say to clary and say?
No, you have no problem. Please proceed. Again, I'm going to encourage everybody to talk into the microphone. We want to hear your voices. What is the current speed limit there now?
Speed limit posted on clary drive and on San Clemente Street that was evaluated previously, it's 40 miles per hour.
Any other questions?
It's going to go down 10 miles an hour, just around the curve. There are warning signs that reduce the 10 miles per hour. And on clary drive and stuff, what we.
Hold on, just your public comment.
Colonel 1335, Lily Hill Drive. In the report, it mentioned the road surface and the current condition. As we are currently paving our streets in here now, that's not a bad road, but it's not one of the better roads in our town. If this evaluation was done after that road was paved, would we still be looking at 30? Or would we be looking at what San Clemente is, the 40 mile per hour posted? I'd just like to take that into consideration because we are on a paving project as we speak. And I'm sure that is on the list sooner rather than later. Thank you.
If not, public comment will be closed. I actually thought exactly what I was about to ask. Because where are we at exactly? I just forgot about exactly.
Yeah, so this project is not in the next phase or this current phase, so it won't be done for at least two years. But it's currently, currently we'll have a roofing cutting in the next couple of months, so without getting too much into this town, you don't know. But basically, the topic that was brought up, will we be doing this soon? No, we will not be doing it soon as the pavement management program stands today. So we are bringing that back to the council, and that might change. But currently, the way the KMP program is set up today, that will not be altered within the next two years at least. Again, the speed studies are done every five years, so there will be an opportunity for this to be revisited when we come back to it. So this is a follow-up final. When those streets are amended and updated, we'll be able to revisit that, take that facility.
Yep.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
LaCorte.
Yes.
Barrett.
Yes.
Poe.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Longbridge.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hearing notice, consider all evidence and testimony for certain approval of City Council Resolution Number 2024-32. Proving the abandonment of the eight-foot wide sewer easement located along the South Property Line, Parcel A, Parcel Map 14798. Hearing located at 2701 Columbus Drive.
Yes, ma'am. I will still make time to our Capitol Projects Manager, Kathy Roush.
Therefore, the signed approved resolution of the City Council of the City of Needles for the abandonment of an eight-foot wide sewer easement located along the South Property Line, Parcel A, Parcel Map 14798, also known as 2701 Columbus Drive. A little background on this site, an eight-foot wide, 162-litre sewer easement was dedicated to the city on Parcel Map 14798 in 1996. The intent of the easement at that time was to allow construction and maintenance of a sewer lateral to serve Parcel 1, while the two parcels were under separate ownership. So we remember Taco Bell, they paid its premises on Parcel 2, which is where Taco Bell was located. And it was acquired by the ownership of Parcel 1, Columbus Drive LLC. And following that, a lot line adjustment was processed and recorded in 2022 to combine the two parcels. They became one. And then recently, Columbus Drive LLC has requested the city to abandon the eight-foot wide sewer easement and take over maintenance of the existing sewer lateral serving their buildings. This here is just a location map showing the entire parcel. You can see the buildings at the rear. For photos, this is a recent photo of a new building that's been constructed, which used to be Parcel 2. Now it's always Parcel, so it's at the front of that parcel. Photo, the red circle area represents the easement area. That's where that sewer easement currently is. The 162 feet, eight-foot wide. And slide, that's just the zoom in. But that, that representative shows the dedication actually to City of Needles of the easement. On the map, it's kind of highlighted in yellow. Next slide. I just put this in there. This was the actual lot merger document that shows the two lots where they removed the actual line between the two lots. It became one lot, one parcel. Next slide. And another photo showing the easement on the aerial, just to kind of show you in relation to where Carl's Jr. is and where the new building is. And with that, the recommendation is to approve resolution of the City Council of the City of Needles for the abandonment of an eight-foot wide sewer easement located along the South Property Line of Parcel A, Parcel Map 14798, also known as 2701 Columbus Drive.
Questions by council? Open to, uh, public comment? If not, public comment will be closed at this time. Council discussion.
I'll move to a room.
What's I said?
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorthol?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Longberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Open hearing notes to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of City Council Ordinance number six, six, seven, dash, A.C., adopting the California Building Standards Code twenty twenty-two edition. Sending ordinance number six, three, five, dash, A.C., adopting the California Building Standards Code twenty nineteen edition. Amend the municipal code article, uh, for, get a form administrative code as section two dash ten, adopted by reference where file, has been continued to September tenth, twenty twenty-four. We will now recess the City House meeting and convene a joint council in N.P.U.A. meetings. Public comments pertaining to the N.P.U.A. council items, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. N.P.U.A. wafer reading and adopt resolution number oh, eight, thirteen, twenty twenty-four in N.P.U.A., authorizing the transfers of money to and from N.P.U.A. account at Wells Fargo Bank to the state of California's local agency investment fund, late, and updating the authorized staff lists. And and wa, the reading and adopt resolution, uh, number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, authorizing the transfers of money to and from the N.P.U.A. account at Wells Fargo to the, uh, the state of California's local agency investment fund, and updating the authorized staff list. City manager?
Yes, well, thank you, one at a time. We have two resolutions in front of you, one is from the city side and one is from the N.P.U.A. side. Basically, we need to update our late authorized list at this point in time. Uh, the current folks that are on the list don't exist, not part of the city staff. In order to be able to make, uh, make deposits and withdraw monies from our claim from local agency investment fund, we have to be able to have an authorized. So what we're doing today is, uh, recommending a tool for the resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, authorizing, the, authorizing the transfer of monies from the city account to the late account of the authorized list. So basically, we're, we'll do these one at a time, and both are basically the same, just for the different entities. So we can take these one by one, and now stand, there's any question, please?
Uh, question by council. Um, open to public comment? If not, public comment will be closed.
I'll take the motion to approve the resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, authorizing the transfers of money to and from the city account at Wells Fargo Bank and WAVE, and updating the, of the authorized staff.
I'll second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorthol?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Longberry?
Yes.
Thank you.
We move to approve N.P.U.A. resolutions number eight, thirteen, twenty-four, N.P.U.A. author of the government twenty-two, N.P.U.A. count, uh, parcel A, the late, updating to the authorized staff list.
I'll second that. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorthol?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
General again?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Longberry?
Yes.
During the joint N.P.U.A. council meeting and re-conveting the City Council meeting, road hall was previously taken. Public comments pertaining to the council items, the three-minute time limit per person has been established. Council consent calendar, all that is listed on the consent calendar. Our consent to be routine will be enacted by one motion in the formal system. The mayor, any member of the City Council, they hold an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to the council action, a member of the public may address the City Council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items five through eleven on the consent calendar by the formative road hall vote.
Terrible thought. Oh, number nine, who will?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council in front of you, we have a change order to the public works agreement for the pre-heat corporation for the rain up for speech improvement project, authorized staff issue a notice of completion. So the city staff received a grant for the two point one million dollar park that was built, also known as the Botnoski's Park, uh, but if you're talking to councilor, it's, it's the first speech project. At the end of the day, we had a contingency that we put to the side to be able to cover the cost for any overage. And so in this space, we've got a twenty-five thousand dollar availability and contingency, but we've got a nine thousand dollar grant funding requirement, and a twenty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-one, uh, that's required to come out of the general reserves. So at the point where the city had to shed tiers and purchase a wastewater treatment, uh, sewer septic system, uh, basically, it required us to utilize the reserves for that. Uh, those, uh, in order to be able to, uh, improve the system liability in the area, we went ahead and added the septic system that wasn't part of the scope of work before. And so we went ahead and made those changes to, uh, the project. That wasn't the initial scope of the project, but we went ahead and amended the scope of the project to make sure that we could, uh, provide a septic system for that area. So that's why we're going over, uh, it was a hundred and eighteen thousand dollar septic tank. We had a ninety-three thousand dollars observed. Of that ninety-three thousand, a hundred, uh, basically, a majority of that was used up for the septic tank with twenty-five thousand dollars remaining, which we're going to utilize as part of this. So we're ninety-nine or ninety-eight point one two percent of the project was covered by the grant. The remaining one point four percent has been covered by the city.
Do you think so, that it's been by change or is this?
Based on the conditions that the city was dealing with, uh, with the adjacent property owner, uh, this is something that we needed to do that was not part of the scope, the initial scope for the project. So as a result of the, uh, change of scope midway through, we had to move that and we developed, it's just better off for the city, uh, on the lower.
Call for the motion. I move to approve. Second. Call for the vote. Call for the vote. Oh, sorry. Uh, any public comment regarding the items, about five through eleven? No, public comment will be closed. Second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorthol?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Longberry?
Yes.
And council consent calendar, rate their council items, research on ordinance for feeding feral cats discussion. Staff, ready for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council in front of you, uh, July ninth, the City Council requested, uh, the city staff research the feasibility of adopting an ordinance for feeding feral cats. So currently, there's no law in California which prohibits, uh, eating, uh, community cats or feral cats. So basically, they allow local ordinances to address the issue. Several cities, uh, we looked at various cities, both in Arizona and in California, that have passed various ordinances to address the issue. So what is the City of Anaheim prohibits? It actually has ordinance that prohibits feeding of feral stray cats on public and private property. Sabrina County takes a different approach, basically, uh, prohibits leaving food outside for mammalian predators and many other animals during specific hours, ten p.m., six a.m. The City of Bullhead, Arizona, has a state law on which it relies on. The state law states that any person becomes an owner of animal, if they keep it for over six consecutive days, at that many times, it's a linkage to ownership, and they're able to utilize the existing code, which is in the, uh, code that is being adopted as a city. So the city itself also has various ordinances that have been adopted, most recently prohibited from owning, from keeping, and harboring unaltered, unfed, unneuterized cat over the age of four months. And so basically, there's a speed, newer, neuter requirement for cats. Additionally, there are animal limitations and welfare ordinances. So basically, if there's malnutrition of an animal, basically, we hold the property owner responsible, or the owner of the cat responsible, and then their animal, and then again, if the individual has more than four animals per residence, that is also against the current municipal code. A linkage would be required, similarly to what they have in Bullhead, uh, over six consecutive days, enabling the city to establish ownership. So that's one way to go about it, instead of lightly outlawing the ordinance about feral cats. Uh, I do want to highlight the trap and neuter release program that the city currently is implementing. Uh, basically, we've been very successful in over a hundred cats being spayed and neutered, uh, since the inception of this program. Uh, we're, we're willing to, uh, Lake Abbot's team came in, uh, multiple times a week to be able to ensure that we are trapping, neutering, speeding these cats, uh, and which is, so we've actually taken one more step and actually put action into effort. Uh, so basically, uh, the funding, uh, if it's funded through a grant, we're gonna look at that as the funding becomes, uh, as it dries up, because obviously, there's also much funding available. So we will take a look at that. But at the end of the day, the council can choose to adopt a new ordinance specifically targeting, uh, the feeding of feral cats. Or we can enforce the existing ordinance, but we'd have to create a linkage between ownership and the animal. So put it in the ordinance, some sort of days requirement, obviously, I want to get the city attorney to see if we can enforce that, we do know that's a state law. So again, uh, we need direction from the council on how we want to proceed. Uh, we can expand the T and R program, we continue to work on that to advantage the feral cats. Public education in this, in this pamphlet that you have, or near as a flyer that we wanted to share with the council and members of the public, basically, it outlines what is the trap and neuter release pilot program. Again, it is a pilot program, all pilots, completely unanimous, there's additional funding available, and we'll look at that. But, uh, the trapping, neutering, uh, and releasing of these animals, what's currently taking place in Desna, P Street, P Street, A Street, Sibola Valley Avenue, Front Street, K Street, F Street, Mark Street, Brandy Bay, and Cal Free, out there for the ones that are currently, uh, being implemented. But at the end of the day, I need direction from council, probably want to proceed on this. So with that, I, uh, our coding, uh, our animal enforcement team is also here. I'm going to see Barrett, and Tony, and Trish, all, anything for any questions you might have. But this is the research that we found that presented to the council regarding this subject. So I need direction, and so basically, this, uh, I need direction on how you want staff to proceed. A, we create an ordinance that, that limits the ability for individuals to feed stray cats on public or private streets. Can you do that? B, we create, uh, uh, amend the codes that you can create a linkage between ownership of an animal. Therefore, we could utilize the various sections of the code that already exist, like malnutrition or feeding of an animal, uh, or feeding of too many animals over more. We can also create an ordinance, and we are with the Dune Sabrina County prohibiting eating food outside for mammal predators and animals during specific hours. So there's various ways to go, uh, go about it, I don't want to make, not about various ways to go about it, but, uh, tempted. But basically, uh, yeah, right, so, yeah, we're leaving a book. And so this is the four, very. But staffs here, yeah, staffs here to ask, yes, to answer any questions right now.
Like a comment, we can just be on those options.
I just want to know about, you say all the winter options, you put out in the field, like, cats and the neighborhoods, and that what you feel would work best for them?
Honestly, I don't think, uh, they, feeding of the feral cats doesn't work. We gotta talk about, for example, a ninety-year-old in Mississauga, you're gonna say, that's all you can do, your cats, give your ticket. It's not like one of the students can, uh, they sort of, uh.
Thank you.
That's not the ultimate, but I do look at them, definitely prepare, give your ticket. Now, probably also look to, we're gonna go to somebody else. I think that, yeah, we pulled already again, uh, want to enforce it, enforce it, but I think it's the language, really. I mean, people are gonna say, well, she had one of her cats, she's gonna say, or approve, they're gonna say, that's not my cat. They're just, they're feral cats, we all know, so, I might not enforce it.
So it's almost impossible to force it or investigate?
Yes.
So you feel should stay with what we have, okay, Jeff?
Yes. I feel like, say, we have with the, you know, also in portions, uh, like, I can say we can strap over one hundred cats. Uh, I want to mention all that, basically, the numbers on, having trained faster, where that being quoted, uh, how many guests they haven't put down because they were on the property. Um, so I believe it's pretty good.
Is city around, how long, or city's?
It's all over the world, it's like, I mean, this is, this is not a needle, it's all over.
So what is the general counsel for the test, you're taking in, is that the statistics? Do you provide us, are they, sell a desk door, or do you help any?
Some of the hard things. So we have quite some statistics, we see that there is an animal, a feral cat, that does not belong to anybody and is injured, we'll take care of that issue. Um, we have had six cats, uh, two hundred and six cats being trapped that have either been severely ill, or we've taken them to the vet, they had tumors. Um, they just didn't make it to surgery. These cats, um, best decision was, that's because we just said, let's be for it. And so we said, it's just really hard to tell somebody, you know. But just being out of the field, all this, uh, when we released them, we didn't time, after they had surgery, these women are so happy to go along with their resident schedule and see these cats come back and take care of them. That's pretty weird, that's pretty horrible, moving every single day to speak to these cats. But I don't need experience to give an older person that has nothing to do with it, to complain to it, for feeding the feral cats, this is gonna follow all over the world for many, 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 many years. Stats are, you ever keep, it's got a, I think, such a, it's not our experience, it's, it's, uh, thirty, thirty. Uh, out of the thirty-six cats, ten of them are pregnant, each litter is an average of six kittens. We have aborted over sixty cats since we started this program, maybe even one more. So the program's working, uh, the fixing of the feral cats, also the issue of less bites, less biting. To, to, cap, with the out of the environment, can you advise? Moving on, Tony is at my shoulders, that's, that's very dangerous to, as long as they're quiet. I just think this is working, and if we're doing it, it's gonna work. This is what most of the programs and the people we talked to, our team is to turn around for them, who were fortunate enough to do this plant. And it's one thing, I believe it's one thing, the cats are not able to mate, and it's pretty stupid, same. We've got forty-one, sixty-four, two thousand, that's huge, real elastic feet, working. And that will be, but everyone's visited right here.
Thank you for what you're doing, it's appreciated, really appreciate what you're doing, and I think it is working. Uh, feral cats, we've been catching them, really supplying that, that does work, that cuts down on, on the population of them, and does cut, cut down on biting. And, uh, to implement a law that, uh, that you can't feed the cat, and you can't enforce that law. It's not enforceable, because there's nobody in the person.
For a quarter, if we did do an ordinance, but if what if we redefine what the oldest meant? Not to go after the people who've been waiting for years, but to give us some teeth in case damage does get done, or something like that, how would you guys feel about something like that? Not in like, uh, something you go out across, because it's something just protect people with meat being. But how would you feel about something like that? If we define somewhere, like, somebody who fed a cat, I'm just curious, I'm curious. I know you're kind of saying, but, okay, not to go after people, but to have.
Well, I mean, so, for instance, the road commission, if it's all, if it has more than four cats, which we've done, I'd say, I'd get a thing, I saw, you know, you have. Which we've done, I expect educator thing, I saw like, oh, yeah, you don't want to have six, eight cats on property that they got upset, but in the cat, if I'm not in this, you know, program, they have to be best. Um, or if they have issues with suspension. I'd say six, eight.
So it's very, like, you know, they suggest staying in this program, I'm not believing.
So we, there are budgetary constraints regarding that. We'll do, we'll make the dollar go long as much as we can to order, to make that, uh, goal, to keep that program, we're very successful. Uh, we gotta be mindful about the schedule. So just so we're all aware, they get out there about three o'clock in the morning. And then they have to be home by seven, uh, or lake haven soon, depending on who they have the green wolf with on that day. And so it is time consuming and the rest of the day is pretty much. So what we would be able to do is space it out. So basically, make it prioritize the time that to be able to bring that happen, uh, to be able to utilize existing budget that's still adopted. So what we're at, we're not asking to amend the budget today for, for the part of the T and R program. Well, we are saying, you know, this T and R program exists and it's something that's a tool that we can have.
And yes, I, I just want to forever think that when we increase, when this is filmed, what time is it that you show up to our home, let's do it, it's around seven. Three thirty in the morning, they come and they sit around and we sit and wait. And if it works, they got three on the high burn. I mean, go there anyways, I'm sure that I would send them. I sent them, I met them at the animal shelter, a little time ago. Uh, but it's three thirty in the morning that they go out and do this to us. So I, we do this together.
Okay, so I need direction. Do you want to drop the ordinance? Do you want to create a linkage between ownership? Do you want to continue with what we thought going on now and not do anything at all? I just need guidance that we can move forward.
I was gonna ask.
Yeah, can you look at Chris Paul, how many cats out there do you think there are? Or that you have a few, maybe two, five hundred. I'm, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot. Um, so you're about twenty percent, we need super.
No, we're, we're, we're gonna be able to do every single catcher, it feels. Pop the legs.
So we're already. It's the neighbors that we can't, there's an average.
Any public comment regarding this issue?
Yeah.
That'd be long acres, sixteen, nine, twenty, thirty, probably. I actually brought this up. My son's talking about living from a feral cat. Work hard for that car. Um, they've been finding these cats in my neighborhood for a couple of weeks now. Doing well, I see less. I woke up by security line at four AM, but four in my yard. Surrounding the trap that I have directly in my, I don't know what y'all baiters with, but damn. So when I was a council, if I'm not mistaken, he said in law that made pet owners, you're here to mess. But you know, non pet owners, we're not gonna do anything about it. Um, second of all, if I catch that cat in my trap and I choose to go and relocate it somewhere else, I violate California state law and that's a law, okay? But no, it's not my cat, it's not my pet. If I catch it and relocate it somewhere else, then, um, so, uh, as it's working, it's not really working because my neighbor orders fifty pound bags of cats from Amazon twice a month. If you'd like me to steal it, oh, really? I'm gonna set up a game camera in my yard and film all these cats. And unfortunately, I'm gonna have to find better trap. Because the same stuff, they're still on my field. Yeah, so we're gonna punish people with pets, but people without pets, my mind. And capturing and releasing them back to where they were is just gonna keep screwing up the property. So, well, while I don't want any pets killed, I, I, I like the neuter leave. How about this, well, there's a lady in a trailer park that, when I come in on Facebook, was like, bring them to my park. I have a problem, that's a Riverfront park, by the way, so, um, there's that. But my neighborhood life, I, I have to go at my kid's parking. What does that cost me? And she, she's eight, two years old, she's a former mayor's wife. Look at her property, like, you, you want us to fix up our property? Why should I fix up my property when it's like this? My whole street smells like urine and cat shit every morning, excuse my French. But this is ridiculous. So I'm gonna go home and order traps right now, not nice ones. You know, I had a coyote in front of my house one, he's crying then. I chased him with my truck down L Street into that big patch of mosquito, like the big two story on the corner. This isn't gonna stop. When my cousin Doran lived right within this house, he said it was like that, that was twenty years ago. Have a good night.
I'm holding close. I have a motion without a need, uh, just keep it open on our behalf. And I think it's a really good situation.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
The port call?
Yeah.
Barrett?
Yeah.
That was a no. No?
No.
I'm sorry, to speak up? No? Bell?
Um, yeah.
Long break?
Yes. It's a motion, beautiful.
Approved tenant improvements of the River's Edge Golf Course House concession and pro shop building. Kitchen remodel, staff before.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council in front of you. We have a plan for tenant improvements to take place at the River's Edge Golf Course concession tent and pro shop building, uh, kitchen remodel. So in twenty twenty, Scott, uh, Barron and Chris, uh, Chris Barron, uh, they're basically bought the nineteenth hole from the LeCarrs. At that point in time, they entered into the lease and became the, uh, tenants of the city of Neos. The way the lease is written, and basically section nine of the lease requires the leasee to seek any written proof, uh, heal by the landlord, which is city of Neos. So the nineteenth holes requesting modifications to the kitchen, food counter, storage area, will increase the kitchen size and accommodate additional equipment and food prep. The leasee needs to obtain, uh, clearance, in which they have, the San Diego County Health Department approval. And that's the set of plans that you have in front of you right now. So basically, they're working with the San Diego County, uh, they have a public health department to move forward the changes that are needed at the site. They've been working with the public health department since twenty twenty one on some of the issues that are outstanding. But these are, these are improvements, standing improvements that are going to be required for the business to proceed. And the owner, uh, both of the owners are curious, like, they wanna, uh, get any questions of the intentions or concerns or any, uh, they can help to ask any questions you might have. But our recommendation is to approve the tenant improvement of the river's edge golf course, golf concession and pro shop building. This would be an investment into our community, into the building that's currently existing. It will be a great added value to the folks that do go down to the nineteenth hole and the patrons that are there, it is a point of business spots on the city. So this will add significant value to that property. So with that, I now stand for any questions you might have. Also, the Alkins here, get any questions at them.
Questions by council? Open for public comment? Not public comment only closed. I assume from the gentleman improvements of River's Edge Golf Course concession and pro shop building, you're true law. A second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
The port hall?
Yeah.
There?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Bill? Yes, Longbridge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Authorized the city clerk to publish a notice that they can cease on various boards and commissions due to the expiration of terms and resignations. City manager.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council in front of you. We've got four vacancies on various boards and commissions in the city. The public board of public utilities has one vacancy with the term expiring on September thirty first point seven. The planning commission is one vacancy with the term expiring on September thirty first. Parks and Rec Commission has one vacancy set to expire. The housing commission has one housing authority standard over the age of sixty. We are gonna start pursuing individuals to sit on these boards and commissions. At the end of the day, the council has the authority to put somebody into these positions. So it's a very important role that you all have to really work diligently and get it out there to all members of the community to participate. Uh, so this will be published and we noticed vacancies in the paper. We will also put it on our needles connect app and just inform the community about these opportunities. We appreciate those folks that do spend their time on our boards and commissions because it is time away from the family, it does take a little bit more extra effort. We appreciate those that sit there.
Seven. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
The port hall?
Yes.
There?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Bill? Yes, Longbridge?
Yes.
Approved fifth amendment to on call consulting services agreement between the city of Neos and development management group. A for economic development consulting services in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand and extend the term of the agreement until June thirty of twenty twenty five. City manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council in front of you. We have the fifth amendment to the on call development services, uh, development room, development consulting services group. It will increase in the term and compensation, will remain the same. Uh, Michael Bracken, who's the CEO of development management group, has been working with the city for over ten years now. He's been a part of the success and improvement of numerous businesses in the town, including the Dollar General, the Hampton Inn, the Autozone, and really assisted city staff various functions with the X round development goals of the city council. Uh, EMG continues to present city in numerous events throughout the year. Joins us at ICSC, he's been with multiple councils up here representing our community and sharing a story, telling the story that we have here. Basically, it's Crown Jewel, it's desert on east coast of California. We got a lot of things going for us, and we're just so thankful for, for those that do share our story. So in front of you, we have a recommendation of approving the fifth amendment to on call consulting services between city of Neos and development management group for an economic development consulting services. The term of the agreement will be for one year. Decently sixty thousand of it is for the economic development. These ten thousand of it is for going out, hosting these events that we have at ICSC, we go twice a year. And whatever additional, uh, conferences that he would attend, but it's not unheard of. We're here to attend the hospitality conference, the independent grocers conference. So basically, he's attending all those on, on behalf of the city of Neos. So our recommendation is approval of the contract. He's also on the line, if you have any questions for Michael or myself.
I would, I would personally like to see that, you know, we do approve, um, the contractors development management group. I know Michael is out there, you could call him if you, you know, found a contractor, he does call him up and, you know, ask about, you know, coming to Neos or what Neos needs to do. Um, he does have great insight in, in the economic market for us, especially being a small town. I know we're in a political game where it's difficult. He is out there working to try to get us a grocery store, you know, or machine and housing improvement. So I would like to see the vote for his, uh, contract till two thirty twenty.
Counselor?
Um, yeah. Um, I absolutely agree with everything you said. And, you know, one of the biggest, biggest things that we get to have, which is amazing, is when we go to ICSC, which is international dimension, Johnson, we meet all these people, all these companies, we try and bring those businesses to our town. We get a boost in a place that people look at us little tiny fields and go, how did you get here? How did you beat the thick here? And we know this is why we're bringing Bracken, he's our person that takes care of us and he puts us out there and upfront and we meet all these people. It's amazing, it really is truly amazing what he does for us. And as a new councilwoman, when I first started a little years ago, you know, just the handholding, the education, the meeting, the introductions and the encouragement that I got to where I'm so confident going through these things now. It's, it's just really, um, wonderful what he does for us.
Yeah, there.
That's right. Yeah, I kind of want to speak up. This is kind of always a hard one for me, I believe, because we have since at all the tables, I really think Michael's helped us a lot. But I also don't think we have a long way to go. So I kind of want to see our options standing. I still think we need to be businesses. I think we are hitting, we're going to swallow, we say we're trying to get intel, we know intel is declining. I think we have to get, I was, what do you know, just option, so you know, we get. So I just feel I want to see a, a, an option on the table with this. And I say that, it's, it's, I don't feel like we're doing enough of it. And so I really would like to see that added into this.
Michael Bracken also, I was talking about putting on roofs in our city. To have roofs in our city too, it's mostly really being, you need housing here too. Um, I think he's a, he's a great asset to our, to our city. Uh, the little, little bit, well, it's a lot of money, but the little bit that we pay, I think is worth it.
Thank you. And I just want to say too, it's, uh, going so distracted, being in my, now that I see, uh, most people, people say, uh, his knowledge, uh, it's like an encyclopedia when it comes to different people and businesses. But his relationships that I've noticed at, uh, going to Vegas, uh, kind of conferences, you know, so many people, like Neos under the noses radar, and so many people just rock people who's your fashion. Maybe everyone's like, oh, why wouldn't people want to be here in Neos? Uh, it's a repetitive conversation that's just had. Uh, the people are always, you know, developers, developers, they'll say, I'll say it all the time, they're looking at numbers, they're looking at money, they're looking at faith, and they're not going to, they share you. We have to be able to fight something. Be constantly, though, is out there, she's been, not just the same, but good people. And, um, everyone that we've met has had a lot of good things to say about my family's company. Uh, even other cities that we sat with at ICSC. So, um, I think that really is, um, right. Plus.
Question?
I'm looking for a bit.
I'll second.
I'm starting.
Any public comment, Barry, Michael Bracken, or this company? If not, public comment will be first. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell? Yes. The port hall? Yeah. There?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Bill? Yes. Long break?
Yes.
Thank you.
Accept the proposal from the board to provide professional services for a housing market, demand of assessment for not to exceed the amount of twenty thousand dollars, and authorize staff to execute the professional services agreement and notice of award for the work. City managers.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, earlier in the agenda, we accepted a sub-agreement with the International City Council Management Association. We were fortunate enough to receive a grant from the Bill, uh, Melinda Gates Foundation for Economic Mobility, uh, the Gates Economic Mobility Grant. So basically, this will allow us to take, uh, it's a two facet approach. One is our, our team has been able to go get, uh, hands-on training and, uh, basically professional development by going to Washington DC and hanging out with our farmers, members in Washington DC. Uh, so it was a great experience for them, we're very, very thankful for the opportunity. There'll be a second meeting coming up where, uh, city managers, the, uh, capital project manager and the city planner will attend and set a meeting, which is part of the requirement, uh, for, uh, this grant. But at the end of the day, the big chunk of money, the twenty grand, twenty thousand dollars, excuse me, will be utilized for our housing studies. Again, this will be crucial for us to get those rooftops as a council member. Again, this will be crucial for us to get those rooftops as a council member, uh, Longbrake was talking about. At the end of the day, similar to what we did with the retail grocery store study, we've got a third party stating the city can, uh, basically absorb a certain amount of units, what kind of units, who can go with those units, what are the, what are the prices of those units? So that's the kind of study that we're going to receive. So we went out to RFP, uh, we did receive three bids, we're thankful for all the three bids, but the bid that we ended up going with is the front door group, which is the professional services group about hunting down Newport Beach. So basically, they're very well versed in law knowledge in this. So our recommendation is accepting the proposal to the front door group. We do have a deadline to get this done by December, so they promised us that we can meet that deadline, so I'm really excited. It's going to be an extra tool for us to have. Next one, what has been told to us at ICSC, basically, this will help take us to the next level. I'm not guaranteeing that it's going to bring rooftops, but at the end of the day, it's another data point for these developers to understand when, when Michael and myself or the mayor and anyone, if you were having their city staff, having conversations with potential developers to come to the Needles, uh, city. So we're, uh, recommending approval. And with that, if you have any questions, if you might have, uh, Mike, uh, Mike and Conash will chime in too, if you have any questions, but it's pretty.
Um, questions by council. A public comment regarding, um, this, uh, grant of twenty thousand dollars to a potential service for housing to market system. Now, public comment will be closed.
We will approve the proposal from the front group to provide the professional services for housing like the management system.
Second.
Two second.
And call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes, McCorkle, yes, Merritt, yes, Poe, yes, Bell, yes, Longbrake.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four regular city council in QA, HAC and the city manager.
Yes, ma'am, mayor, members of the council, on September twenty fourth, it will be in Fall dessert for retail improvement. A majority of the council will be in there, so that whole timer is sold to that. We're recommending that we're going to be canceling that second meeting in September. Again, it's not to take the night off, it's to go and be retailers so that we can attract the whole retail to our community. So with that, we recommend canceling the second meeting in September of this, uh, next month.
Um, any public comment regarding, um, cancellation of the city council meeting on September eighteenth? If not, um, public comment will be closed.
I'm going to approve the proposal this way, the meeting September.
Second.
And call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes, McCorkle, yes, Merritt, yes, Poe, yes, Bell, yes, Longbrake.
Yes.
Thank you.
Authorize those interested to attend the twenty twenty four Sanrio County State of the County Conference on September eighteenth, twenty twenty four, Ontario Convention Center in Ontario, California. City manager.
Yes, ma'am, mayor, members of the council, the item Sanrio County State of the County State in place where basically, uh, we get to see our, uh, the county supervisor, spend some time with their staff. It's always good to be there first and to see the staff. If you're not at the table, you're on the menu, throwing here. So basically, it's one of those opportunities to get in front of our supervisors and other members of the Sanrio County, uh, communities. Uh, it does mean the council goal because of regional collaboration with other cities and counties. You want to have that, a good relationship with them, gives us an opportunity, but we have a cost for the registration, fifty dollars, and there is violence, possibly three hundred fifty dollars. General, uh, private travel is also allowed to permit for that. Now, uh, those that wanted to attend, that showed interest, the mayor, Dan Dernigan, myself, I rely on attending, authorizing those interested in attending the twenty twenty four Sanrio County State of the County Conference is what we need for it. So for those that want to attend, uh, we'll be driving down, driving back the same day. Those that are interested, uh, please, uh, let the, let the mayor know, so people get some folks to.
There, don't take my control of them. That's Tom Campbell and House.
So Ellen, you thought I'd be there?
And we've also been invited by twenty five, the tourism, or Riverside Sanrio County, Inland Empire, um, to speak to the Asian groups that are there. We're going, he's going to have a speed event and just to have them, we're going to explain to them about Route sixty six and tourism out here and the whole something else. Should be nice.
Perfect. So we need a motion to approve, uh, council members Ellen Campbell, uh, Tana Bell and Mayor Jan Dernigan to attend twenty twenty four Sanrio County State of the County Conference on September eighteen, twenty twenty four, at the Ontario Convention Center in Ontario.
I salute. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes, McCorkle, yes, Merritt, yes, Poe, yes, Bell, yes, Longbrake.
Yes.
Approved resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty four, approving an employment agreement with Kat Brash for Director of Development Services. Capital Projects Effective Ops fifteen twenty twenty four, setting a salary of one hundred fifty one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars in compliance with SB fourteen thirty six and incorporate into the salary schedule FY two oh four dash two one twenty five. City managers.
Yes, ma'am, mayor, members of the council, in front of you, I have a recommendation for the new Development Director of the City of Needles slash Capital Projects. Basically, in May of twenty twenty eight, uh, excuse me, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, I came to executive session, proposed the merging of two positions. We would save money for the city, emerged the development, uh, the Development Services Director with Capital Projects. And that's what we went ahead and did and put it out. We were able to get a successful internal applicant. Uh, Kathy Roush did interview with myself and a panel, she was the panel person, and she followed up the second interview with me. But basically, Kathy Roush's been doing this job since November of twenty twenty three. So we're so thankful that she stuck around this whole time and we people, it's really a hard task to not only manage your department, but also be the capital projects engineering, uh, project manager when you've got eighteen million dollars for the projects that you're responsible for. So again, it's, it's worth, we're due, it's time, uh, that we, we take that next step. If you have a major development services director and capital projects, uh, person. So she will be an at-will employee. It does require her full-time commitment, uh, with no other outside business activities. Termination can occur with or without cause. There is a six-month severance, this, in the contract, it says six. City benefits available for all other employees will be provided. And, uh, consideration is extensive after a regular hour of work. Because she's no longer a classified, unclassified employee, she won't have the top opportunity to receive comp time. And so this will be able to provide her with an extra time that she spends here at council meetings and planning permission to be able to be compensated for that time. So this position is not included in collective bargaining agreement, it is served as an at-will city manager. So with great enthusiasm, I'm really thankful to be able to, uh, recommend approval for this resolution. Uh, approving the employment agreement with Kathy Roush to be our new Development Director of Services and Capital Projects. She, uh, really has shown that she knows the name of the game, she understands what we're trying to do here, and she's trying to improve the quality of life for our residents. Uh, every day at the time, and we're just, uh, so happy to have it. So totally did, uh, I know that it's, uh, the council likes to throw those internally and, and basically throw those from the inside out. This is basically, she's been with us for quite some time now. So it's, I'm just really blessed to be able to have, uh, present this to you tonight. So with that, uh, I recommend approval for the employment agreement of Kathy Roush for Director of Development Services, Capital Projects. Do you understand any questions? Do you mind adding, real quick, I do want to add, by merging the two positions, we were able to have a cost savings. So I just want everybody to do with it, there is a cost saving, who's going to vote about that, Ralph?
It said six months, I read it on here, it says three months.
Correct. And in the actual agreement, it says six months, it was a typo. So I just wanted to make sure for the record, when, uh, people saw that, uh, staff report compared it to the agreement, signed agreement that we have. In here is a six-month severance, and then we do have to terminate without cause the six-month severance, if that will be.
Uh, any other council comments? A public comment regarding Kathy Roush for the City of Needles, if not, public comment will be closed.
I'm going to approve. I'll second.
Just to clarify and make sure we understand the motion is to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash three four, approving funding for Kathy Roush. For Director of Development Services, Capital Projects, Executive of the Office thirteen twenty four, setting salary one hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars in compliance with SB fourteen thirty six and incorporate into the salary schedule for this year, twenty twenty four. Said the.
And call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell, yes, McCorkle, yes, Merritt, yes, Poe, yes, Bell, yes, Longbrake.
Yes.
Any interjecting part?
Yes, briefly, uh, some of the items that my office has been working on, hopefully, uh, include continuing to work with city staff under the four C, the voter cannabis tax. Also continually representing the city and working with staff, voter enforcement matters, assisting the city with public contracting matters, representing the Needles housing authority, advising the city on Brown Act and conflict issues, advising the city on planning matters as they arise. Also continuing assisting staff, the review of applications for individuals that want to work in the cannabis industry and severe Needles, and assisting the city on real estate matters. Also, uh, we recently worked on, uh, with staff, city manager on preparing a letter to the State Lands Commission relating to the June fire of the City of Needles, and then assisted the city, the city with, uh, professional service agreements and also, uh, looking at this barrel gas options issue.
The city clerk.
Well, I'm happy to say that tomorrow's going to be the official last day of the filing period for nomination papers. So with that in mind, we can, we're going to close out all the documents and be filed with registrar votes. And, uh, the election moves on. I've, we've worked with the building department on the building ordinance and the ongoing, of course, breakers request, uh, complaints, things like that. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for your patience. You know, this is a temporary setup for us. Um, it's actually growing on me, but it's really, it's really, it's a really nice venue for us, it's very historic. But, uh, so thank you for your, for all your patience as we work out the ginkers. So the City of Needles partnered with Vinegar and Associates tomorrow. For those of you interested on off, off-highway motor vehicles, we're holding a second community meeting. The first meeting was in Longhurst. And so for those of you that aren't aware, the state of California has Needles right staff in the middle of the vehicle code. Basically outlines that, uh, Needles is able to have off-highway motor vehicles throughout the city. I know in Arizona, that's, uh, this is as usual. There's two jurisdictions in the state of California that are allowed to have off-highway motor vehicles. Go from city street to a trailhead point. Basically, Needles is one of them, and Emilio County is the second. So there's a big tourism opportunity and we're really excited about working on that with Sheriff's Department, CHP, and, uh, and all those of the BLM, all those involved, and really excited about that. Second, during the council meeting July ninth, real quick, I want to be brief, because Mike Bracken really doesn't like to hear about himself. But basically, he presented a report that detailed significant growth in Needles over the past decade. So just some of the highlights, four point five increase in city population, growth in educational attainment, both at high school and bachelors by forty point four, thirty percent. Respectively, the median household income has increased by thirty four percent. So from twenty thousand to forty thousand, uh, the, uh, thirty one percent in the median home value. So in the past ten years, we've had the Auto Zone, a fifty million dollar cannabis industry, an eight million dollar park improvement, six million in parked water infrastructure, twenty-five Tesla vehicle charging stations and New Hampton Inn. So basically, over the last ten years, the city's seen significant growth. We're just so excited to be a part of this growth. Representative Golf Course has announced that the twenty twenty four seating schedule has been released. So those of you that want to golf between September second and October third, you're not to wait. Uh, we will be, uh, beginning operating, opening operations October fourth to ensure that you don't miss out before. Uh, get your, your tee time scheduled today. And thank you for Los Angeles Times, basically, Arizona State University Financology Office stated that the City of Needles is the hottest city in July, uh, in the United States. And so, uh, if you read the article, it was a great spin that despite the heat, our community stays cool with local events, tourism, and refreshing Colorado River. So join us for some fun in the sun and, and we're so cool, or it's so hot here because we're so cool. So with that, uh, just briefly, uh, the City of Needles has commenced, pull up that slide, the pavement management program. It's a fifteen-year pavement management plan that we've been, uh, funded by the city cannabis dollars. And not only that, in the beginning years, we really had to, yeah, we'll zoom out a little bit, um, and I'll find this in the council, I'll tap that down. So basically, before Canada, the city really had to, the city really had to figure out how they were going to fund the roads. And so with this map, you know, they'll be available online. But basically, at the end of the day, measure I funding, which is, uh, gas tax allocation, federal dollars, the only way the city meals has been able to improve its road structure. And so luckily, starting in twenty twenty, the City of Needles has been able to revitalize its roads through cannabis tax. I know it's going slower than anticipated, and it is a fifteen-year program, and we're getting uneasy, and I understand all that. But at the end of the day, when you look at this map, it's so wonderful to see all the different colors on this map. It's truly remarkable. So we're going to be getting this out to the public, so everybody's on the same page of what's going on. Uh, at the end of the day, we, we work diligently, we put millions of dollars into our heating infrastructure, and we had to be creative. We had to be like Rocky the boxer and find different ways to do it because it wasn't all cannabis dollars. So we got to use grants, uh, federal allocations through over loyalty. And so basically, this shows everything from, from this current year. We will have a groundbreaking, uh, second week in September, so we'll be notifying the public for that. And then we will be right off that, right off about it, that we'll be doing phase four B. In addition to that, we're working on the update to the, uh, pavement management plan that will show, um, the, the next progress that we've been trying to encourage. We've learned a lot over the last five years, probably one of them forward, paving our streets, paving our roads, here and here. Uh, working with Kat Roush, the new, inside me, the new Development Director, congratulations. Uh, we'll be working together at Sasha Capital Projects, we'll be working together to get a, get a plan out in front of the city council. So we all can, uh, approve how we're going to move forward. But the, the next four A and four B are scheduled and moving forward, we'll be able to identify how the city wants to move. Now that we've taken everything we've learned and implemented that, so really excited about that. Uh, Needles youth, they're going back to school starting the fourteenth, which is tomorrow. So congratulations on your teachers, get to back to the classroom. Uh, River, uh, Colorado River Station, Sheriff's Police, Needles Police are hosting a backpacks food supply drive. So if you have an opportunity, go and take some school supplies to them in the lobby, they'll be donating these items to the school districts. And also our, at fourteen oh one Bailey Avenue, uh, that's where we're able to do that. Thank you, uh, uh, Tina Kusto for being that person. And then additionally, uh, at the Red Center, we're going to have the after-school program that starts up again, uh, tomorrow. So those that want to, those that want to participate, have their kids participate in the after-school program, come on down. We do build legends there, uh, you know, we do have more state championships than any other state with, uh, Arizona and Nevada. So we're really excited about that. With that, uh, that concludes my report and thank you, uh, uh, sir, for coming to our meeting. We appreciate the regional cooperation. We have a tall, uh, Toby Carr has been a great friend, friends to our line. We look forward to working collaboratively to our communities forward. So with that, that's, that, that. and we look forward to working collaboratively to move our communities forward. So with that, that's, that, that concludes my report.
I have my notes, and tomorrow, tomorrow is the deadline for the sheriff's department background. It's like, well, they are, but at the base, uh, tomorrow, uh, maybe they accept the petition, but they asked for a bunch of things. And welcome tomorrow, you will be at us. I'm Kat Hamza, and she's, I've only talked about president. Oh, I've only had the five. Five, and we will talk about it. So, uh, I just wanna congratulate Kathy, uh, officially. So that's all I have, and we're gonna have the fun meeting with all the kids, so. Message.
Um, I have a big, big, um, council member comments.
Uh, yeah, I had, uh, seen a couple of articles, uh, three weeks in a row, where three different people were arrested for domestic violence. One of them was a attempted murder, it's very concerning to see these back, back, back. She got to thinking about it. Um, the Neals brochure has a couple of little points where victims, it could be male or female, but it's not always the best of those. Uh, just a couple of little points where they could possibly get help. We've got some great resources, the Firehouse Ministries, the Golden City Safe Houses, and the National Domestic Violence Hotline, for instance. But I'm thinking, uh, to be a little proactive, that if there was some sort of a flyer or something that would be made available strictly devoted to where to get help if we're in a potentially violent relationship. That maybe we could have gotten these potential victims the help earlier, so we wouldn't have an attempted murder charge, it wouldn't have a domestic violence. Something that we could put on the website, uh, perhaps employers could put it in their break room, just, you know, on that poster, or even martyrs could put it, tape it on the restroom, just to make that information to, to potential victims, to prevent them from becoming injured. I'm afraid that an attempted murder could actually end up becoming murder. And if there's any way that we can get the word out that there are resources that you could get to before there may be, so maybe something to think about, that, that, uh, the city and some of these organizations could work together and put something together toward. So that's it.
Uh, council member.
Well, we're gonna do another nine eleven, learn the beat, so we're going to, uh, Warmse, it's part of, any local areas. Uh, we're gonna ask the sheriff again also to be involved, Fire Department maker, who usually has family CPR for eighth graders, did it last year at the high school. Uh, so, actually, I know some of you guys have, you know, like, you're dumb, think CPR is a tough time. There's a boldie nine eleven, it's like an hour long teaching rubbish. Learning, um, educators, just counseling CPR, actually, we're pretty benign, but he does do a lot of gas giving, well, teach formal, will have to look CPR, saves lives, CPR saves lives, kind of said that, it's the University of my five years, it has, we definitely should test to survive. So that's a really great event that we brought into Neals, it's actually a tri-state event, so I'll reach out to you guys a little before you get us all signed up together and work on that. Uh, again, school, school gonna start tomorrow, so get it forward, get it back in there. Uh, pool hours, I've heard lots of good things that we have extended pool hours, I feel that you'll be able to go longer, but they have about seven, I can hear lap slippers, and then about twenty-five exercise pool together, and sort of multiple times, so I just have, we've been through all these, struggling to change, so I wouldn't try to get that a little better. You know, I think we should look into Maranica, the gentleman, he's there, he's absolutely right. We have to, possible for there, so we'll do it with this, so, talk about, I'm sure more of this. Um, can we look back into people's ball court? I know that, like, you guys are doing it on, on high school, during the summertime, we played here, and then Tahoe, there was, it's just a great event that most families cannot bring back into our town, so I think you're really looking at it, and there's another way to try to get that back. It's huge, it's growing everywhere, it's great, helps a lot for all the citizens. Uh, September, uh, twelve, the college is also due to conference, gonna throw flyers for one meeting. You're bringing in their, their directors into, and then local, uh, conference here to try and give you a, a program, okay, I'll tell you. Um, so they're gonna invite everybody, it's ten thirty, to put the flyers out on Friday, but every ten thirty, the month thirty. Uh, they would love to have any support, you know, if you're required to bring in more resources for us, and especially if we can get enough in the academy, which is, it's basically a nursery program, so people step in, they're registered nurses, but it's an open, I tell them first, it's a great stepping stone, it'd be a great program to offer, yeah, for our community. So if anybody's interested, has a possibility to share about why we're being here, what we're supposed to learn, college, um, she will bring that out Friday. And I think we need to celebrate, have some kind of party, we'll have a city win. That's a huge, we need to take what our wins are, not to contribute, in my mind, hey, we're the best at long thing. We need a party, something that brings you back to, like, celebrating the obvious, but whatever it is, I don't know. So if you need to think about a good cheer, we would be delighted. Um, so definitely, I'll, happy to get involved. And that's it for me. You have something, or Longbray?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I was gonna speak on this before that gentleman spoke, on the cannabis smell, on that, uh, and that's, Jake, um, and the one that he was talking about, you know, on Lily Hill, I'm not gonna butt into him, because I was gonna speak about this anyway. The ones on Lily Hill was, was a, was a, a thirty thousand square foot building, and they were asking for a twenty thousand square foot building to, to be built to, to house their, their cannabis with new three point one million dollar air conducers in there, to alleviate the smell of that. I was sitting in the audience when the council approved that, and I was appalled by it, that they approved that. Because that place is sitting there, reeking of that smell, and they did get a free pass, and they have a free pass. They can have that smoke coming out of there. It's unfair to the school that's across, across the freeway. The school across the freeway, the teachers complained to me all the time. We have to smell that, our students have to smell that all the time. Why, why is that, why is that, that, like that? Why, why are we allowing that? Well, I found out because the council did. And I hope there's something we can do about it to reverse that, because that, to me, that's utterly ridiculous. Congratulations on you, you're a, you're a plant, that's awesome. And, uh, Councilor Alfonso, thank you for being here. Very appreciate that. And with that, everybody have a great.
Thanks. Um, we hosted the Tourism Portified, which all the, um, chambers in the area came by, it was very successful. Uh, Freddie P. came out from the Tourism Inland Empire and spoke, had a, a nice lunch, it was hosted here at El Cares. We received a lot of good, positive feedback. I attended JPI meeting in, uh, July, the insurance were, um, insurance fee for the city, and the two biggest, uh, planes that they're having this year, uh, is World Pop and Pride-related planes. And I did sit, we meet with few cities that I usually don't, uh, get to meet with, so that was an experience. They all wanted to know about Neals, you know, being so hot. Um, I, I would like to give much thanks to Tri-State. Patrick and I were talking about it, Tri-State, uh, Community Health, they really have stepped their game up in the food giveaway. They have, uh, Tri-State equipment rentals coming and doing the forthlift. Uh, the City of Neals is helping with, with the trash, the cardboard left over, and the tribe is picking, I think, and use smooth. We started at five in the morning, and it was, uh, a great event, their post, so it's, it's a much thankful that we have. I'd also like to thank the city crews for getting all the school markeets, the sidewalks, the crosswalks, all ready for school this year, we were on time in fact. And, uh, again, just, uh, thank you so much. Have a good evening, and a kind of a evening, we'll be here for sure.